Welcome, everyone, to the City Council's special meeting this Tuesday evening, October 2. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
With pleasure, Madam Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nash.
Here.
And Mayor Lee is absent, representing the city in Toyanaka, Japan, for the 60th anniversary.
Thank you very much. We are excited to be here in person, with options for those who choose not to be in person, to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and had it handed to the Madam Clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin with the first and only item on this special meeting agenda, which is a study session on Commercial Cannabis Ordinance and Permit Options Discussion. Our presenter is Katie Weisong, our graduate student intern, and Alex Kajikian, our city manager. We are to receive information on various commercial cannabis permits and policies to consider and provide direction on which cannabis-related priorities, policies, and permits, if any, are desired in the city. Katie, over to you.
Deputy Mayor Nash, Alex Kajikian, city manager. We'll have Katie take us on our presentation journey here shortly, but the item before you this evening is the Commercial Cannabis Ordinance and Permit Options. And I'm just so delighted to have Katie with us here, who, over the last four months, worked really hard to do all this research and really bring all the information forward this evening with a beautiful agenda report that she'll be presenting on. And she's a fellow Cal Bear, and so we do have internship opportunities here in the city of San Mateo, so want to make that plug. But with that, we'll be going into the next slide on the PowerPoint. If we can get that up. So what we'll be doing, we're seeking guidance this evening on options for the city, which options the City Council would like us to move forward with here. The first question for the council this evening is whether we continue our exploration efforts, and that would include the next step or critical path with commercial cannabis would be exploring a draft revenue measure ordinance for the November 2024 election ballot in order to tax commercial cannabis activities. And then the second approach that staff has put in for next steps is a wait-and-see approach. So nearby cities, specifically Redwood City, where I came from, they've been really proactive in having a commercial cannabis program over the last seven years, and I actually led it personally over the last seven years. And so they are getting their new retail storefronts up and running. And so looking at the data of what comes back in terms of revenue projections with actuals, and then also community benefit packages, what was projected in actuals as well. But before we jump into those questions for discussion this evening, I'll have Katie go ahead and give us a little bit of background and history on commercial cannabis, and then I'll be following that up with a discussion of just an industry kind of state-of-the-market update, and then we can close it with the next steps. So Katie, you can take it from here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I wanted to start with just some brief background on recreational cannabis in California and the city. In 2016, Proposition 64 was passed by a majority of state residents, as well as a majority of those voters in San Mateo County. In light of that, San Mateo passed an ordinance which prohibited all commercial cultivation, processing, and sale of cannabis. This was in line with many other jurisdictions at the time, which gave the city time to consider if they wanted to move forward and still have regulations in the meantime, instead of reverting to the statewide standards. In 2022, the city council at the time added a goal of adopting a retail cannabis ordinance as part of the goal-setting workshop, and this city council voted to keep that goal on the 2023-2024 strategic plan, which is the guiding piece for today's presentation and the research. Just so that everyone has the same background, I wanted to go through the six permit types that the state allows: cultivation, distribution, testing, manufacturing, storefront retail, and delivery retail. Given San Mateo's land use and current business interest in neighboring cities, this presentation will focus primarily on storefront and delivery retail, since those are the most likely options for revenue and San Mateo's land use. Since revenue is a primary motivation in the initial conversations and the goal-setting workshop, wanted to start there. Conversations with neighboring jurisdiction staff shows that permitting commercial cannabis operations does provide an opportunity for new revenue. However, they're significantly dependent on what type and how many businesses the city allows to operate within its jurisdiction, as well as the state of the cannabis market, which the city manager will go into more detail at the end, and its current recession. Additionally, in order to generate substantial revenue, there would need to be a revenue measure approved by San Mateo voters on an even-year ballot. Most of the time, these revenue measures give the city council authority to set the cannabis tax within a range, such as like 0% to 10%, to have some flexibility based off of market conditions. And those revenue measures are on top of a 15% excise tax on recreational cannabis set by the state and collected by the retailers. This chart just gives us a bit of a sense of what the variation is in terms of revenue. A lot of the more established programs, such as like Oakland or Pacifica, which allowed retail cannabis from soon after 2016, have more substantial revenue. But for cities that are just getting started, it's a bit lower, especially when they have fewer permits. Any projected revenue should be considered as a range, rather than as a specific amount, just given fluctuations in the market and businesses and whether or not they actually operate. One note is Burlingame at the bottom. Burlingame, a few years ago, or fairly recently, voted to allow just delivery, retail, non-storefront, but they haven't had actually much interest at all, and no permits have been approved, which means despite staff time to get the ordinance passed, there is no revenue incoming on that front. The same has happened in Mountain View, which allows non-storefront retail only, which is an important consideration. Public safety is a primary concern for many jurisdictions when considering a retail or any commercial cannabis ordinance. The state has a baseline 600-foot separation from sensitive uses that it recommends for all retail or commercial cannabis activities. Those sensitive uses, they define as K through 12 schools, daycare centers, and youth centers, but other cities have expanded that to also include parks or libraries. You can see on the left the example from San Bruno. They chose to have a specific cannabis qualifying zones, which further limit where retail cannabis businesses can be located versus other cities like Redwood City, allow them in any place that allows retail uses but meets these separation requirements. Many cities also have separation requirements between cannabis stores to avoid a concentration in one location. Additionally, security and safety is a primary concern, both around youth access to cannabis products and around the cash-only business and other criminal activity. Every city basically requires businesses to go through a safety and security plan approved by the police department. This ensures that the businesses have a process in place to ensure that there isn't theft or other activities. Additional requirements can include onsite security personnel, especially for storefront retail, limits on signage for delivery retail, specific vault and door lock requirements, security cameras, odor control plans, so that the smell doesn't go to neighboring businesses. And finally, implementation is a pretty substantial piece. Every other jurisdiction we spoke to emphasized that it is a pretty significant process to get a retail cannabis program up and running. You can see on the right just some of the steps needed to get to the point of having businesses operating within the city. This varies a bit depending on how the city chooses to select which permits can operate. Most cities have restriction on how many permits they distribute. Some do a lottery, but many choose to have a more rigorous process in order to allow the city council or city staff to have more say in who, which businesses can operate within the city. This is also particularly because this process can be highly litigious, which has been the experience of other cities and in California. And just from Redwood City's example, it can take over 90 hours of staff time per application to review, and that doesn't include consultant hours and costs about $22,000, according to the fee study. And I'll turn it back over to the city manager.
Thank you. So just a quick update on the status of the cannabis industry. So locally, there's the Silicon Valley Cannabis Alliance. Sean Callier is the president of the firm, and he's been very involved in San Jose, Redwood City, and other cities along the peninsula about just the expansion of the cannabis industry in localities. Per a discussion I had with him late last week, specifically, the cannabis industry right now is going through a recession, and they're kind of hunkering down right now. The high point was during the peak of the pandemic, when everyone was stay-at-home and were consuming quite a bit of cannabis at the time, and so they saw peak sales activity during that. But now we're at about 25% to 35% from those peak sales. Some of the factors is what we said was the reduction in the cannabis consumption. The other piece is that the black market is still thriving right now, and the tax laws with the states, 15%, and then the local tax, and then your regular sales tax amount just gets very expensive compared to if you have someone on the black market, or people actually can have up to six plants in their own home here in San Mateo indoors as well, and can go ahead and tend to their own plants and utilize their own cannabis. Also, there's unlicensed, unregulated businesses too, and so the best, it's the other businesses who usually will complain about the unlicensed businesses. They do a really good job policing themselves, but that also digs into the competition. And then just specifically on expansion efforts right now, what once was a thriving debt market where you could get lines of credit, that has all basically dried up at this moment. And so it takes a couple million dollars, really, for a cannabis retailer to really establish a really nice retail storefront. Specifically, typically with any of these processes, a city would require that an operator identify a location upfront, and there'd be a letter of intent, basically. And to hold that letter of intent or the LOI, it costs money to hold the property with a property owner. And then you have the cost of just going through the application process and the consultants that help you prepare all of this and the application fee. But then there's the build-out, and so that's significantly expensive, and you want to have a quality build-out, you want to have a quality storefront in your community as well, and so that requires a lot of capital. So what I heard directly from the Silicon Valley Cannabis Alliance is, Alex, we would be pounding on your door right now if we were interested in coming into your city, but at this point in time, we're hunkering down and really believe that, you know, get through this time of recession, hopefully within the next two years, they'll be back going on their expansion efforts. I also thought that it would dovetail nicely of just us really looking at the data, and that'd be the next slide of just of overall next steps. Option two of really doing the wait-and-see approach over the next 12 to 24 months to come back and see exactly how our fellow cities are doing in terms of revenue generation, as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, but then also how the cannabis industry responds to the current recession it is in. The other option is if we wanted to continue to explore or go down this path, then the next step would be really looking at a revenue measure to be placed on the November 2024 ballot, because if we continue moving forward, we want to know that the voters, they would want this tax revenue coming into the city, because if not, we're going to make a significant investment of staff time and resources, which you saw in that earlier slide with almost, you know, we only have 11 departments in the city, and pretty much I was looking at, it's like eight out of 11 would all be working on this initiative, and it does impact your staff resources and capacity at the same time. And so I think we want to see what the ROI is amongst our neighboring cities, and I think Redwood City is a really good mirror image of San Mateo has a bellwether for us, and so that's kind of where we have the option two as well. So with that, we look at the summary, so just there's the opportunity for revenue in permitting commercial cannabis businesses, but thoughtful implementation will require significant staff time, and then there is this, you know, kind of recessionary piece that they're going through right now, but just with the tax laws, the competition in just recent years is really impacting them as well. So next slide, please. So here are the two questions for the council this evening for discussion. Both Katie and I are here to help respond to any questions you might have, so thank you so much and great job, Katie, with your presentation and your work.
Yes, thank you very much, Katie. Appreciate that. As I said to Katie before we started the meeting, her work is so good, we should offer to other cities. I think that would be really interesting, so take advantage of it. So my fellow council members, does anyone have a question for our team?
Thank you. Katie, thank you for the presentation, and I was just curious about a couple cities that currently have ordinances, appear to have sliding scale tax rates in the table you presented, and I was just curious if that indicates that different aspects of cannabis sales or processing in the city have different tax rates, or is that a historical range? Maybe you could explain a little bit more, please.
Yeah, the table shows, so that's the overall tax rate, because some cities do have sort of different tax rates, whether it's retail versus manufacturing versus cultivation. So they'll have different tax rates based off those, the highest usually being for retail products.
The other piece, just of the sliding tax rate, it allows the city council, so depending on how the market is going, if you really needed to, you hear from the cannabis retail storefront owners saying, hey, this is way too much, you might, you know, gives you the ability to go from 0% to 10%, or if it's going really well. And so it gives the council the flexibility and also just the different types of commercial activities that you can have, so different rates for different things as well, but it allows that flexibility, and the council can make that decision.
Thank you. Those are, that's my question at this time.
Thank you. Other questions?
So I've got a couple of questions. It looks like Redwood City is actually doing a little over a million, but they've got six establishments. I can't imagine that we would do six establishments in San Mateo. I just don't think it would go over. It is tempting on the money, because I think last time I talked to Rich Lee, we're getting about $3 million a year out of the TOT tax, unless that's gone up. So it's revenue that we need, but it also looks like a lot of. So I guess the question, the two questions I have would, one, and I see the chief is here, what type of policing problems could we expect, number one? And two, would truly, if we could raise a million dollars a year, if the effort would be worth it in time and staff? And if the answer is no, then obviously, we need to rethink it.
So I see our chief of police coming up.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. Yeah, a good question regarding the crime impact. I've spoken to the city manager, and our city has already realized and experienced crime related to cannabis dispensaries from neighboring jurisdictions, so that is something that we consider and have some examples if the council is interested. And the other concern, obviously, for the police department is what its roles and responsibilities would be from a regulatory or management perspective and our capacity to meet that and whether or not we'd have to add staff. But I do have examples of some crimes we've experienced related to local dispensaries if the council is interested in that.
And the other question is, if we could raise that kind of money, which sounds like is doubtful, would it really be worth doing it at this time?
So the red, you specifically called out Councilmember Hedges the Redwood City projection. I worked with HDL on that projection, so that projection itself is really, what it is, is a projection, right? And so what we were looking at, what I was looking at at the time in talking with consultants and really looking at the industry, you're looking at about each business at a 4% tax rate that we had established, about $210,000 annually. Now, would that come to fruition? I don't know. That's where the wait-and-see approach will be helpful, to really see the reality of it. But understanding from our consultants and talking with the retail businesses of what their projections are, that's what Redwood City came to the understanding of what would be a pretty conservative projection on that front, but we won't know until a year out. And they've only been, they're not all up and running, all six of them yet either. I believe three are currently up and running, and so in the next couple of months, you'll have all six up and running.
Thank you. I see deliveries, actually, in my neighborhood occasionally, so I know that we have other cities that are delivering here. I just need to make a statement, though, for clarity, that I belong to Local Union Five of the UFCW, and last time I talked with them about cannabis, my union represented about 700 people in the cannabis industry, and they thought they would be by now to 1,000 members. So that's not going to have any bearing on my decision, but I think for transparency, I should tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hedges. Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you for a great presentation. Just some follow-up questions. Do we, I think Rich has already kind of touched on this, but do we have any idea what this would represent or could represent in revenue if we were to roll it out?
So it's all dependent on the location of the store. That's going to be key. So if you're really in your, you know, vibrant downtown, probably going to do pretty, pretty well, where that'd be. I would say that what I've seen from different cities, you're probably in that $200, $250,000 range in current dollars today. And even during this recession, or, you know, this, this time of recession, if you have a really quality storefront and the location is prime, you're probably still going to do pretty well.
Thank you. The other two questions were medical versus recreational. So do we tax at different tax rates if someone is buying from medical versus recreational? It's all the same?
Trying to recall, so there's the prescription piece, right? And so you can't tax prescriptions, so that's, if I recall correctly. If it's the recreational piece, then you're getting the regular tax. But Katie?
Yeah, I think that most cities have a differentiation, and the permits on the state level also differentiate based off of medical versus recreational. So generally, it's kind of two tracks, but dispensaries often sell both, but I think that the tax rates do vary.
And I think, Alex, you told me this on my 101, but just wanted to clarify and put it on record. Currently, cities are delivering, and we heard the chief say, in the San Mateo, but we don't get any tax revenue right now for deliveries made to San Mateo.
So I haven't checked with our finance department or revenue services to see if delivery businesses are remitting any tax, but typically, you probably will not see the remittance. There's only a handful of actual delivery companies that actually do that itself. Typically, when a city goes down the path of wanting to actually establish a commercial cannabis program, you'll start seeing a lot of the potential businesses or delivery businesses or retail storefront, they all of a sudden start, get a business license and start providing revenues because they want to be in good standing with the city as part of the overall application process.
Thank you. And then the last two questions are just, I probably should have Googled this. Age, as far as, so age would be 21 if it's for recreational, but it can be 18 if it's, if it's medical. Is that accurate? Okay. And then if someone wanted to make a bakery, would that fall under the manufacturing bracket, or would that fall under still the storefront?
So if they're making, say, producing gummy bears or any time, I would say that's probably the manufacturing, I would think, rather than the actual cell, because it might be wholesale distribution then to the actual retail storefronts.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
There is also a permit type at the state level called microbusinesses, which allow you to sort of have multiple steps of the supply chain in one, including, so it might fall under that, but no jurisdiction in San Mateo County allows microbusinesses.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Member Hedges?
Yeah, I just, I haven't heard this mentioned tonight, but the state of California actually has an apprenticeship system for people who are going in the cannabis industry for training at all levels.
We are learning things tonight. Thank you. Any other questions? I think the only question I have beside, once again saying thank you so much for the presentation, is I noticed in your slide that there was a very large difference in the projected revenue between Redwood City and San Bruno, but there weren't that, it wasn't such a huge difference in number of locations. Any comment on that?
Yeah, so San Bruno will only have one retail site, even though they're allowing two, but only one is allowed to be retail, so the likelihood of difference is just the number of allowed, and any revenue projection. All of the other staff that I spoke to encouraged, like, very much to take those as sort of like a range, because like figuring out exactly how much is quite difficult, but I think it's, the main difference is that it'll be one storefront location, which is the primary revenue generating in San Bruno, and six in Redwood City.
Okay. Thank you. So if there are no other questions, I guess it's time for public comment. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
I have no in-person speaker slips turned in at this time. If you're on the Zoom call, we have three attendees. If you'd like to speak to this item, please raise your hand. We have no public comment.
Thank you. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for comments. And why don't we start with Councilmember Newsom, since we're down at that end?
Can we put the questions back up? Sorry. So based on the revenue projections of, say, quarter of a million dollars, I don't think, and having to bring so much staff into making this move forward, I think, I think I'm in the number-two camp, which is the wait-and-see approach. I don't know about two years, but maybe come back and revisit this in a year and then see if we want to punt another year, or if we want to, that's, that's the camp I'm in, and for reasons I've already said, so thank you. and for reasons I've already said, so thank you.
Councilmember Hedges?
I was one of the ones that voted in the, in the beginning of the year to, to keep this on the list. Based on current information from the city, from this presentation, it seems a little foolish to go forward with it now, but I don't want it to go away, not because I'm a user or even interested in ever being a user, but simply because our city needs revenue, and it needs it pretty badly if we're going to really serve the, serve the citizens here. So I want to keep it on our watch list, but I think we need to delay it for some time. I actually like Rob Newsom's, Councilmember Newsom's suggestion that maybe we take a peek at it next year or two.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you. I would generally concur with my fellow council members on this. I would prefer a wait-and-see approach at this time. I echo Councilmember Hedges's, you know, reminder that I think a main driver of this as a council priority has to do with continuing to, as a council, look for revenue measures where we can. But I think, as has been stated, this, this may not be the ideal time to go forward with this, given the number of other potential ballot measure items this council may wish to place. They may not necessarily be revenue measures, but it's, you know, I think the comments the city manager made about staff time and that, you know, for this initiative, you know, given, it comes with an opportunity cost, and I think, given the number of initiatives we're already pursuing, this would be a lower priority at this time. But I would agree with my fellow council members that it would be good to revisit. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will make that four, for the wait-and-see approach. I would not want to put huge effort into it in the next year, because it sounds to me like a lot of the other cities will really just be getting going. So I think it's probably more of a two-year cycle, but I think it might be interesting to look at an update to the analysis that Katie did at a high level. That would be informative. And also, as Councilmember Lorraine said, we have so much potentially on the ballot that we need to start picking and choosing, so I would agree. So do you have what you need?
So that was very helpful. One point of clarity, and Deputy Mayor, you hit on this, is that in order for us to get the full amount of data coming out right now, if we look at just Redwood City, they won't be up and running with six storefronts until probably the new calendar year coming up in January. And so if we're really looking at just overall, probably bringing this item back in calendar year 2025, so that's just, you know, like 15 months instead of 12 months, so we can get the full data to be able to bring that back to council. And then if we want to move forward with a revenue measure in, say, November 2026, then that would at least give us kind of a place to start and give us a good runway, if that's okay.
Works for me. How about our, are you okay with that, everyone? Yep, okay, I guess, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, I guess we close our special session.